Meeting, it is the first Monday in July. First item on our agenda, approving minutes of the last time we gathered, two weeks ago, the June 17th minutes.
I make a motion, approve the minutes?
Art's got the motion and minutes as written. Is there a second?
I second.
Eric's got the second on the minutes from the June 17th meeting. No discussion. We'll vote all those in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That carries. I got my gavel back and I got a thing I can hit now. Looking up for old Chuck. Two items on our agenda tonight. Two public hearings. One has three action items to it, the other one is two action items to it. Everything on the agenda tonight is going to follow the exact same format, so I'll just kind of walk you through what we're going to do now and what's going to happen here in the next hour. I wasn't expecting that. We're going to have a presentation for our city staff. They're going to give us an overview. They're going to give us an overview on the project. We'll ask any clarifying questions that we have. When we've got our ducks in a row, then we go out to public hearing. So this is a formal public hearing, so we go out. We usually give the courtesy to the applicant if they want to go first, they don't have to. But name, address, organization you're representing, et cetera. This is a completely remodeled public hearing room now, so that's where you will come up and say hi to us at that podium. Everybody gets to cycle through once, say what you've got to say. When public hearing's done, we then bring it back up here, then we'll have discussion on the items. And that's why I said there's two public hearings. The first one has three action items, so there'll be three motions. The second one has two motions to it. But the presentation's going to be the big picture overview, if that all makes sense. But eventually, we'll talk things over. Somebody's going to make a motion to do something, we'll vote on that motion, and more motions and more voting. We are an advisory body of the city council, so whatever our recommendation is, goes forward to the city council, they're the final arbiter, so we're kind of your warm-up act. Everything here is going to be kind of repeated at the city council, just in a little shorter form. That's it. That's what we do here. Public hearing, the Kleberger Riverview Ridge subdivision. We go to our city planner, Harry Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, planning commissioners, as well as those that are joining us from the public. So in front of you are three different resolutions, so three different action items for you today. First one is to, for staff's recommendation, approve Platts for Riverview Ridge. Second one would be to deny a variance request or a series of variance requests. And then the last one is for approving a conditional use permit for a single-family home within Shoreland. So to give you a little bit of background, the applicant for these metals submitted a building permit for a home that's on an unplanted 10-acre lot. Our code is very specific about, okay, if it's an unplatted lot, you have to plat it before it becomes buildable. So that's kind of the emphasis as to why we're here today, is that a plat is needed. The location of where the proposed home is within Shoreland and right on top of a bluff. And so, at that point, we're looking into Shoreland overlay district requirements for how close you can build to the top of a bluff, also requirements on grading and how all that works, and assistance to that top of bluff as well, and then the finished slopes for grading. I'll go over all this just in a few moments in a little bit more detail. So the request, you have preliminary and final plat approval for one lot, and then extension of Amber Court right-of-way for frontage and future development. Second is a variance request to place structures past the top of bluff, to grade past the top of bluff, and then have finished slopes that are greater than 15%. The second is a conditional use permit request for a single-family home that's not related to a farm within the Shoreland overlay. So just very generally, here's an aerial of the property. The blue outline is where the subject property is, just to kind of show you some surroundings. So to the north are some townhomes, some duplexes, some right-of-way from that Stone Ridge subdivision to the north. To the south, you'll have the Cannon River, as well as to the east. And then to the west is actually the other five acres to the original 15 unplatted acres that this 10 acres came from. So first request is the preliminary and final plat. So this is essentially what it will look like. This is a snapshot of the final plat itself. You know, total plat area is about 10 acres. The lot will be most of that, and then there'll be some right-of-way dedicated as part of the plating process. And just to go over that very quickly, the idea behind getting at least part of what you can see in front of you is half of this cul-de-sac, is that in the eventuality that the lot, the rest of the five acres that are unplatted to the west, is developed or platted at some point, we would be able to get the other half of that cul-de-sac. And at the same time, bringing utilities through Amber Court into that right-of-way is the intention of the applicant, as well as to make sure that there's adequate frontage for that lot. And so that's really the reason behind that half cul-de-sac. It's not sort of a strange ask from staff. We do have that actually within code to specifically ask for these things when we can, in order to make sure that future development has a path forward. Those five acres to the west, they may eventually want to develop and plat and get a building permit, and so this is facilitating that. The second request in front of you is a variance. So there are kind of several variances here. The first one is for bluff setback. So the purplish line is the top of bluff. That's based off of a average of the slope over, I think it's 50 feet, if I remember correctly off the top of my head. And so the average of that slope, as soon as you get above a certain number, is when we start to determine where the top of bluff is. And so that is based off of that measurement. If you're looking for specific details on that, I can pull that up later on. However, in terms of top of bluff, that's where we, in working with the applicant surveyor, have figured out where that top of bluff is. A 30-foot setback is required for any structure. So in this case, the home would qualify as a structure, and so you can see in the very dark black outline where that structure is proposed to be. It's not just a garage, it is in fact an entire home. There are some deck posts as well, and I've tried to highlight those in the red on the southern part of that picture. And so where the deck posts are, decks also do count as structures, and so because those are well past the top of bluff, we're starting to get somewhat of a picture in terms of the full extent of the variance. I do have a table both within the report as, as well as on this slide to show you the requirements proposed in the variance. I'll go through that at the very end. But, so, top of bluff and bluff setback is the first one. Second one is a bluff impact zone, which, when we start getting into some of the more engineering-focused ideas behind having a bluff impact zone, it's to make sure that there are no disturbances within that impact zone that may compromise the bluff. And so when we start thinking about that, it's like, well, you know, if we do any development or grading within the bluff impact zone, that may have an unintended effect later on in the case of, say, some erosion over time. Buildings are heavy, they do tend to fall with gravity, and so with a big bluff, with a big slope, we do find buildings do, when they are too close, they do tend to slide towards the bluff and sometimes even down the bluff in cases of extreme weather, whether it's hard rain or any flooding. If this particular property was a little bit closer to the edge of the Cannon River, that might be more of an issue for flooding, but at least within heavy rain, we have some stern daylies from the DNR's perspective that there is a really good chance of a building falling down a bluff. So that's the other side of it, the bluff impact zone. So that not just impacts structure placement, but as well as grading. And then the last thing that we've determined is an issue for this particular proposal is the 47% slope, which I've calculated from an eight-foot rise and a 17-foot run. 47% slope, that's well past the top of bluff. The maximum slope, finished slope for any development within Shoreland is 15%. So to kind of just go over all the variance issues, there's a bluff setback issue. The requirement is 30 feet. The proposed is about three feet past the top of bluff, so variance of zero feet. Second variance is grading and filling land within the bluff impact zone. That's a 20-foot setback. The proposed is a zero-foot setback. Where we see the grading, which are the darker contour lines on the image there, goes about 20 feet past the top of bluff. And then the third variance issue is finished slopes that are greater than 15%. So finished slopes at 15%, the proposed is 47%, so we're looking at around three times the allowed slope. The applicant for a lot of these variances has identified some things that are significantly impacting where their developable area is on site. So there's a driveway for that neighbor to the east, the unplatted five lots, or five acres. The driveway for them, as well as an easement, this easement is very old. It actually extends all the way to Lyndale, and those neighbors to the east do have a Lyndale address. It's very strange. But what this all means is that there's an easement and a driveway that really do constrain what the applicant is able to do within a certain area on the property. There are some mature growth trees that are in the flatter areas of the property that are identified as being pretty valuable to the applicant, as well as potentially to some neighbors. And then the placement of a house near, you know, within those flatter areas and nearer to the townhomes is also something that's undesirable for the applicant and potentially undesirable for neighbors. So just provide a little bit of context to those, to the variance requests. And then the last request in front of you is a conditional use permit for a single-family home that's not farm-related within Shoreland area. The image in front of you is just basically showing where the edge of that Shoreland overlay district is in relation to the ordinary high water level along Cannon River. I don't have to go too far into it, but our code is actually a little bit, it conflicts with itself slightly. There are different sections that do say, and when we look at the DNR's model ordinance, that a single-family home, whether it's farm-related or not, should actually be a, it should be a by right use within Shoreland. Unfortunately, our code is more restrictive than that. That's potentially something that we could fix going on down the road. That doesn't, however, help us in this case. We do have to deal with the more restrictive set of requirements. We don't have a choice. That's actually a DNR, part of the DNR's requirement in there as well. Wherever the code conflicts, the more restrictive applies. And that's generally the case for most cases. So when we get into the preliminary and final plat, we generally do support the proposal. We've done a ton of work to get to this point, and we recognize that the applicant has not had an easy process getting to this point, and fairly enough, the city hasn't either. But I think we're getting to the point with this preliminary and final plat where we say, yeah, you know, we should be able to sign up on this plat. We do feel like being able to use this lot is of great benefit to the city. And so we are supporting the proposal. It does meet a lot of our criteria for preliminary and final plat. Amber Court right-of-way is good for utilities, for lot frontage, future development. We do have the issue of the existing driveway that's across the property, which we do feel like that the applicant will be able to work through and get to a satisfying conclusion with. There is an existing easement for utilities that runs into the middle of the property. That needs to be vacated prior to building permit. We've made that clear to the applicant and the development team. A development agreement will be forthcoming, and in that, as a part of the preliminary and final plating process, we are looking for parkland dedication fees. So that amounts to somewhere around $1,000, $1,200 for parkland dedication, and that's something that can be hammered out as a part of the development agreement. For the variance, generally, city staff does not support the proposal. Running in front, the DRC. DRC also did not support the proposal. The DNR also expressed opposition to the proposal. They are requesting that we follow our codes and ordinances regarding Shoreland requirements. Generally, we don't see that this is meeting our practical difficulty standard. That is not just state city requirement, but also statewide requirement, and it does not follow a comprehensive plan. A comprehensive plan specifically calls out things like bluffs, the preservation of bluffs in those natural areas, as they are a very important aspect of the community and a very significant part of the community's character. We do feel like in this case, there is significant community interest in preserving bluffs and making sure that people are developing with great care along them. And so this is an issue where community's interests, unfortunately, we feel like a staff does outweigh the homeowner's. The conditional use permit, this is one where staff also supports this proposal. All the criteria for a conditional use permit, both in general, conditional use permit requirements, as well as the hidden requirements that are required for conditional use permit uses within Shoreland are all met, except for the impact on the natural features. In this case, it's the bluff. But we do feel like it's appropriate to support this proposal as long as there are conditions that require the applicant to move the home outside of the bluff setback areas, as well as any of that additional grading. So the conditions are spelled out in greater detail within the attached draft. So recommendation is that, from the DRC, the city engineer, as well as myself, the city planner, we do recommend approval of the river ridge addition plats and the conditional use permit to city council. Based on the findings and conditions in the attached resolutions, we are, as well as the DRC, recommending denial of the requested Shoreland variances to the council based on the attached draft. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Don, thank you, Harry. Do we have questions for Harry at this time? I will note for the record, community development coordinator, director, excuse me, Dave Wanberg joined us, and for us up here, the nameplate. Again, we've just got new enough people here, I wanted to make sure. No questions? Public input? Public hearing, who wants to start? Go ahead. No, I was pointing where to go.
Okay.
This is all new to us, too.
I am the applicant, Don Kleberger. I didn't have anything prepared. Yes? I don't have anything prepared, but if there's any question for me, I think well. I think is mostly ironed out.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
So, Don, you know, if you wanted to, you could talk a little bit more about the variance requests, if you would like. I gave a summary, but this is your chance, if you wanted to talk a little bit about
Much better at public speaking than I am, so I will hand it off.
I'm Cheryl Kleberger. I'm a tackler, so I apologize. I don't know, I haven't gone to a ton of meetings because they are frustrating, and so I have stayed away because I don't know the numbers, but what we're looking for is just our forever home. Just, we live right now and right next to people. We don't want to live next to these fine people here. I feel like what's been wanting to be done is the house moving further and further and further and preparing for a 20-40 plan. And I just learned that not long ago. Sorry, I'm nervous, but 20-40 plan is, to me, apartments, more houses, build a cul-de-sac. That's not what we bought this land for. We didn't buy it to roast marshmallows on it and live in town next to people. We bought it for one home, not next to, the driveway moved next to somebody's backyard where we can see it, where they can see us driving, walking. We want to keep the driveway where it is. Then we could keep the trees where they are. We could keep the raspberries, the blackberries, the flowers, everything where it is. If it's not broke, let's not fix it, and that's kind of what we're looking for in some of this. And I didn't go to the meetings, so I'm not really 100% sure, but as far as like the deck being too close to something, then we didn't have a deck on our last house, we don't have a deck on our house now, we just don't build a deck if that's the issue. We're willing to work. Both of us are business people. I own Studio 14, so, I mean, when I was doing the build-out, I did what you said. I, you know, we are here to follow the rules, but we're looking for a little leniency. Work with us, we work with you, sort of thing. And so if we cannot have to move the driveway, take out 100 trees to be closer to their backyard, that would be awesome. If we can work with the DNR, which at one point I thought we were good with the DNR, be paid to get it surveyed, and then they say move it 20 more feet, and then they say move it 30 more feet, I feel like we're just getting pushed to go onto a cul-de-sac, build more houses back there. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Remind me what Studio 14 is again.
It is, we are right near this land of sheds, right near on Curry Avenue.
So we saw you a few years ago.
We were downtown and we bought that building, modeled and everything.
That's why you look familiar. Thank you.
Yes, yes. And so I was asking for variance, and it's been good, it's been three years, and...
Thank you.
Thank you.
If we have any, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What kind of, I don't think it'd be soil because it would be bluff there, but what kind of rocks is it, stone, or is it, what kind of, what kind of material will you be taking the foundation on with it being that close to the bluff?
Whatever there. Got it. If you're going to, we need you at the mic, so.
I haven't done any soil samples. It's like dirt to me, but there is some trees that I've dug out and dug in. But I...
Thank you. Thank you both. We'll continue public hearing. Anyone else wants to address us on either one of these? So the preliminary, final plat, the variance approving the CUP.
We are Dan and Sherry Vanderveen, and we own that five-acre land that is directly west of the Kleberger property. We may be the most impacted by their building a home on their property, as we have a variance that runs through their property, and that is our driveway. This is the only way at this time to exit our home. Their property and ours was originally one big parcel of 15 acres that was owned by Bob and Shirley. They built a log home on the west side of the property in 1979. Bob and Shirley later divorced. The parcel was split with about five acres around the log home, which is ours, and the other 10 acres were kept by them. We bought the log house and five acres of the house, and we have very much enjoyed living in a log home in the woods, even though it's right in the middle of town. We've been there 22 years. Had a chance twice to purchase the other 10 acres. We have the right of refusal, but we're not quite as young as Kleberger does, and we decided it was best served if we kept that money for retirement, and so we have not added on it at all. We were relieved to hear that Don and Sheryl had purchased the property. We've owned them for several years. We were concerned at first, since we know that Don is a contractor, and we thought he would want to build multiple homes. Kleberger's have assured us that there would be only one home built there, which would be their dream. So we would like the city council to help them with their application and accept that would affect our driveway. As we understand it, if the variance is not there, then our driveway would have to be moved around their house and yard. And to do this, and I think others have mentioned this, many trees would actively be used, and this would wreck a lot of the habitat of all the trees that we have. It would also move the driveway right along the backyard that they live in, on the south side of Crystal Lake. So where now they have a little backyard and a few tiny trees built outside. They would just see the driveway. So we really want things to stay there, not at all, not at all in favor of moving, you know, everything is fine, okay, or we'd like it to stay.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Bill Anhorn, I live in one of the townhomes. Most concerned that we were was because of all the trees that Don had come to us last fall when we were working on putting up a deer fence, and what concerned us is that he had said that he wanted to clear off all those trees up there and then put down little seedlings for privacy, which does not make any sense. So I just want to make sure, like the Vanderveens said, to keep things so that the driveway works, so that we'd have our little barrier, because we don't see anything behind us. We can hear a car once in a while go through, but we don't. Yeah, like, we watch birds. I'm close to retirement, got over like 50 years. Here, we've got all kinds of...
Anyone else? I'm not in a big hurry to shut it down, but once I shut it down, it's shut down. So if that's it for public input, we're going to close down public hearing, then come back up here to the planning commission, discussion. Harry, just a logistic thing, the three that you've got them in order, you want it done that way, preliminary, final first, the variance, and then CUP in that order?
Mr. Chair, that's a very good question. Yes. So the reasoning behind that is that if you do recommend in favor of the variance going to city council, that will significantly change how staff reviews and sees the conditional use permit. Right now, it does not meet the requirements that's set out by our code, as well as the DNR for placement within a bluff. The DNR will be watching that and reviewing what comes out of planning commission and what gets approved at city council.
But again, I just, for the logistics purposes up here, we'll discuss eventually. There's three motions, three action items, but it's going to be in that one that he's got to attend to. So, discussion. Steve?
Question is, who does the plowing driveway that's, whatever, people on the map?
It's his driveway. Yes, go ahead.
So, we're, right now, to what's impeding the 30-foot setback from this driveway, and there's no movement to sort that out.
Mr. Chair, if I can just, Commissioner White, when you say driveway, the driveway is not under consideration as part of the, the driveway is itself not an issue for the variance, it's placement of the house.
I guess I, I'll restate it. I see labeled as the garage on the variance diagram, 30-foot setback from the driveway.
No, it's a 30-foot setback from the top of bluff. So in the diagram, the purple line, and I'm trying to find colors, I'm sorry. So in the diagram, the purple line and I'm trying to find colors, I'm sorry.
One more time. If we move the house 10 feet closer to the driveway. You'll need the variance on the back of the driveway.
Ms. Chair, yes.
Other discussion with the group. Bart's got his hand up and then Eric's up. Bart's up next.
Oh, I know we have a question on both driveways and looking at Crystal Lane on easements, Crystal Lane and Amber Ford and Jim and Amber Ford.
Look between.
Both of those other property lines. Cause I'm not sure why the easement couldn't be changed to the driveway, but then of course then the driveway would be taken out and be pulled out of this discussion other than just some tree that obviously is a tree. I do have some concerns about clay and having the deck there right close to the shoreline. So I would like to have some more information about that just because of that shoreline and obviously anything that could happen with it.
And Harry's got a response.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chair. So the driveway, in terms of trying to figure out how to reroute or to change the location of the driveway, that does require the Vanderveens to acquiesce to that request. And as far as I understand, there is, for lack of a better phrase, no dice. So we're, we're working with where the existing driveway is. As of right now, there are no proposals to change it. I think even then, to get to some of the concerns brought up earlier by members of the public, even if the variance were to be denied, the driveway could still stay there. I don't think that we're asking the driveway to be moved in order to meet the requirements of the shoreline overlay district. That, I do, I do have a diagram that kind of shows three different options of elsewhere on the property it could sit at the same distance away from the driveway, it could be maybe even shorter to move it away from the townhomes, but there are.
Harry, just a second.
There are a few options.
Hey, I just want to make sure we got one conversation at a time. No, no, let Harry finish.
I'm listening to him. But I'm, I just discovered something on the print. I was just.
Yeah, no. Yeah, let Harry finish and then we'll go to you.
Listening.
So, yeah, that's, that's generally, we do think that there are other options without moving the driveway. Driveway can stay as it is.
I appreciate that. I was just gonna say that if it was for environmental functions, having this driveway shortened actually would improve that.
And now Steve's got the floor.
What are the other options that you're talking about? Let's ask that question before I, cause I was just looking at this print again and I'm confused, so I'm gonna.
They're on the screens in front of us.
Going on the other side of the driveway. Okay. Cause when, when I asked the question, if it moved 10 foot closer to the driveway, when I look at the posts and I look at the print, it comes out of the bluff range.
So, Ms. Chair, so if I go back to the diagram, just, you know, and I'm looking at this just from like a very quick math perspective, I'm here kind of spitballing. So between the blue line and the red, and the red line on the diagram in front of you is 10 feet. So if I'm looking at it that way, moving it 10 feet to say the north, northwest-ish, we're going that direction, the bluff setback applies to any structures. So whether that deck is still attached to the back of the house or not, would still count. The movement of 10 feet would still put the structure pretty close to that bluff impact zone and still within that 30-foot bluff setback. The way that I'm looking at it right now, Ms. Chair, is that even if you moved it 10 feet, it would still be within both of them.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Let me just take the floor here briefly and kind of try to help reset some things and follow what Harry was saying. That's why I kept saying, we got three things in front of us, three action items in front of us. The preliminary final plat, the variance on the top of bluff, the grading of bluff and percentage of slope on bluff, that's the variance overview. And then the CUP. So the easement for the driveway is just not in front of us. That's not an action item for us. So, you know, we can wish and hope and point at maps all we want, but that's not what's in front of us, the driveway part of it. The one thing, just while I have the floor and then we can continue on, I know things about flooding, I, there are times that we have variances here. That's a five-yard side setback and they're asking for three. We do variances like that. Front yard, the, all the other houses on the block are 10 feet off the property line, but in reality the setback's 25. We'll give a variance, we'll let somebody build, so their house lines up. So there are some variances that we do here that are kind, I don't want to say wink and a nod, but it's okay, yeah, that makes sense. I get it, it lines up with the neighborhood. Historic reason that we've done it. DNR, that's a hard stop on the 30-foot setback from building on a. That's, that's a big red line. And what I wrote down, top of bluff, 30-foot setback, they're asking for zero. Actually, they're on the other side of it. 20-foot setback for grading, they're asking for zero. 47% slope when the DNR rule is 15. I like everything about this except the variance request. There has to be a way that we can move this forward, preliminary final plat, the CUP, the fact that we've got a history with these folks, they've developed one thing and kept their word and done well. There's a way to move this forward that has to be without the variance. While I have the floor and then I will. There's, there's no scenario why I would support those variance requests just because it is such a hard stop with DNR. When you look, when DNR says no, it's not even close, city staff says no, it's not even close. There's a reason that that's different than other variances. Other discussion, Sam.
I totally understand what you guys are trying to do. Problem with planning commission and why I love it and I hate it is that we are governed by some pretty hard rules that the city council net has a little bit more flexibility on. So that's why I would, I'm okay with the plat, I would not be okay with a variance just because of how extreme they are. Not to say that I don't support your project, but city council's gonna have a little bit more wiggle room than.
Other, other discussion. Mike, yeah?
Questions, please?
Yeah.
That driveway that exists there, cul-de-sac is going in.
Ms. Chair, so, you know, again, in terms of that easement, that's squarely within the Vanderveens to say, yes, we're willing to move it or no. We, we have, we have no jurisdiction over it. We've spent, not to belabor it, but we have spent a long time trying to figure out what to do with that driveway. General consensus on both sides is easiest there.
I guess the point I'm thinking is that the driveway now comes off.
Yes.
The old driveway goes.
It could.
With a bluff, builds on the location of the log house. Pushing back 20 feet. Build the new cul-de-sac. Still have a driveway there. That space, what it is, which seems to be the. B.
Sure, Ms. Chair, this is a case where, you know, we can't make the horse drink as much as we bring into the water. So we did work with the applicant substantially at the beginning of this process to figure out, okay, is there a option to work with the Vanderveens? Plating both of these properties, bringing them both into compliance so that if the Vanderveens ever wanted to get a building permit, they could, they could share some of the costs, there might be even some ability for the city to cost share into some sort of cul-de-sac or utility extensions. We went through the entire, the entire thing. But ultimately, what we found out at the beginning of this process is that we were just working with the. So we do not have an option to change the easement, we don't have an option to change where the Vanderveens driveway is coming from. And I'm sorry, Ms. Chair, you know, again, Commissioner Salt, this is not part of the discussion. We don't, we don't, we don't have a way to change where the driveway is.
Other, thank you. Other discussion from, in the interest of moving things forward a bit to pick up where Sam went, I'm not hearing anyone opposed to the preliminary final plat. Feel better if we can move the ball forward a bit and take the, take a bite one at a time. So we, everyone seems comfortable with the preliminary final plat, so.
Chair, I make a motion that we approve the final plat as written.
Yeah, second by Sam. So Bart's got the motion, Sam's got the second preliminary and final plat as presented to us. Discussion on the plat part of it. We'll vote. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, no. Preliminary final plat carries. Taking them one at a time. Now the variance discussion. We can continue to discuss. I didn't, I'm saying there has to be a motion right now, but I tried to get the easy one out of it. Yes, Bart?
I completely understand what you guys are trying to do and I would want to do it myself. And I just, looking at it, taking a look at it with my camera and. Without knowing more, I can't support it right now, especially with, with a large encumbrance on you guys's. So I, right, I mean.
Third discussion. I'll pick up one thing. I'm trying to remember. 20, 30 years ago, Harry's right, the driveways that come up off Lyndale, the history in those, we act like the 50s or 60s. And some decisions were made 20, 30 years ago on that driveway variance that that was how that property was accessed back. It's a variance across that property, there's not anything we can do about it now. Some meetable agreement can come between property owners and they can figure something out, that's between them, we can't. Harry said you can bring people to water. Is there any, let me ask this group a question. Is there anyone feeling strongly that they're okay with the variance request? Mike, go ahead.
I think it'd be okay if they built. Pretty steep slope if it's trying to go down. Work with it, but that's probably.
Other discussion. Steve?
I could see that too, if there was a potential retaining one. But we don't have that in front of us to look at, so.
I'm trying to, Harry, help me in the exact language in the variance because there's actually three parts to the variance. There's the top of bluff, the grading and then the percentage of slope, right?
Ms. Chair, so there is top of bluff, 30-foot setback, which is for structures. And there's also a 20-foot setback from the top of bluff, which is any grading and filling, which this does both within the bluff impact zone. And then the finished slopes, any slopes within shoreline can't be more than 15%. Those are the three variances in front of you.
Got it. So, Dave, go ahead.
One more comment I would make is if there's any way that that driveway could be rerouted, until that happens, that's really the key to rerouting of that driveway. And the fact that there's development that went on since the Vanderveens had that house built makes it possible to move it. Before, when that house was put in there, that townhouses wasn't there. So as development goes on, then that cul-de-sac would be there. That's the only part that really makes sense.
Laura goes over to Sam.
For the sake of just moving this onward, I'm going to make a motion to deny the variance for the bluff setback, the grading and.
Motion to deny the variance as presented in front of us, is there a second for that?
I'll second.
Bart's got the second on the denial, so that's the motion in front of us. Discuss that motion. We'll vote on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Harry, 7-0. Hang on, we got one more. Now the conditional use permit in single-family home. Let me ask Harry just for clarity, what does staff want now that we're at this point? What do you want? What's the recommendation on the CUP?
Ms. Chair, so it's the same as before. So because the variances are going forward to city council with a recommendation of the denial, there are no issues with the conditional use permit because they contain conditions that require the house to be moved outside of the block.
So you're saying we can move forward on this? Discussion, Steve.
Chair, my move that we approve the CUP. Advice from the.
Motion. Second. Mike's got the second. Motion of the second on the CUP. Before I call for the vote, when we're done with this, again, city council, everything next week. You heard everything where we have wiggle room and where we don't. I got a CUP in front of me, I got a motion, I got a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry Bart had a good, I didn't call for discussion on the motion. Was there anything on the motion for the CUP? Thank you. Now we'll call for the vote on the CUP. I've got a motion, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no, that carries next Tuesday at city council. So eight days, same room, same time. For all the neighbors. Thank you. We're gonna move on to the next one on the agenda. If you're really interested in how we work, you can stay or you can go. Thanks, folks. The next one up, Stone Ridge, cash and fourth addition, an easement vacation. And again, this is a two-parter. We've got an ordinance to vacate a portion of the drainage and utility and then again approving the preliminary and final plat. And you'll see that we're gonna do them in that order again for the reasons that we've just talked about. We'd have to do the vacation first and then the plat. So we go to Harry Davis again.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. So the second item in front of you all tonight is for Stone Ridge fourth edition, which does include vacating some easements from a previous Stone Ridge addition as well as approving preliminary and final plats for the fourth edition. So. Can I wait maybe a minute?
Yeah, we're just gonna wait for the door to shut. Okay, thank you.
So the request in front of you all, so really where this came from is that the applicant does own a few lots within the Stone Ridge subdivision and so they're actually a bunch of townhome lots, four lots total. Some marking conditions are requiring them to rethink the ultimate land use for those lots and so they are instead requesting as part of the preliminary and final plat to take four lots that are for townhomes, can reduce them down to three, single-family detached. And at the same time, because it's, there's consolidation and there's requirements for easements along property lines, there's an easement that'll be right in the middle of the middle third lot, middle of the three lots. So that needs to be vacated to permit some sort of development. You know, here's where the four lots are currently and here's the proposed lot layout going forward. And so. So these lots are a bit larger, they do meet requirements for single family homes, uh, within R2, which is the underlying zoning district for this area. And here's a small diagram for the easement vacation. Not a whole lot to it, uh, but at least in terms of the easement vacation, we do support the proposal. Uh, it does meet all the criteria to vacate that easement. And also for the preliminary and final plat, we do support the proposal. We do think it all, it meets all the criteria required for a subdivision, um, and that a development agreement is forthcoming. Just very quickly on that, uh, there were a lot of parkland that was dedicated with the original Stone Ridge, so we are not anticipating any parkland dedication or lieu of that for this fourth edition. So dear city engineer and myself, city planner, I recommend approval of the requested easement vacation and Stone Ridge fourth edition preliminary and final plats, city council based on the findings and conditions.
Excellent, thank you. Do we have questions for? Public input, there's one member of the public still here.
That area?
Just last name and address, just because we need to track.
Travis Davidson, 1214 Amber.
Thank you.
Yes, um, I just had a question about, um, it said the vacation of public drainage and utility easement, does that affect that? Oh, that's what I'm most concerned about is.
I'll let Harry answer it again, but I know where we're going with this.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, it does not impact that pond. There's some final grading that's needed and that's a condition as a part of the plat for that pond, but it's, it's not significantly impacting either existing or future.
It's, it's because of the lots were, were changed and the easement, the easements under the lots need to change.
Yes, okay.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah. Got the note, just really wanted.
Not anything outside of the footprint on that. No, that's, no, happy to answer.
That's what you're supposed to do.
Yeah, okay, perfect. But that's all I needed to know, so. Four houses down to three, basically, all right.
You can tell Hannah it's okay.
I wish all of our public input could go that way. Thank you. And that was the entirety of the public input, because that's the entirety of the public left in the room. So in the public input, back up here to the planning commission for a discussion and a couple of motions. Mike's got the motion to approve, I'm sure you meant the drainage and utility easement.
I'll second it.
Right, so Steve's got the second, Mike's got the motion on drainage and utility, Steve's got the second. We'll vote on that motion if there's not any discussion. We'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That carries. I'm loving that metal sound. Now, the final item, uh, preliminary and final plat, now that we've moved the easements around. Bart?
Make a motion that we approve.
Second over here, was that Ed or, or Mike? I didn't hear. Mike's got the second. Okay, we got a motion and a second on preliminary and final plat, Stone Ridge fourth edition, any discussion on that? If not, we will vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That's it for our public hearings this evening, thank you.
Mr. Chair, just very quickly on that, if anyone wanted to ask the question but felt intimidated, there will be new drainage and utility easements that are dedicated as part of the plats, so we're not.
Yep. Request to be heard, item four on our agenda, is there anything that they request?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll turn that over to the director. Director Womber?
So no, no requests in terms of, uh, projects, but you're just talking about project or, or updates, planning updates?
I got item four, request to be heard, item five is item for discussion.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I thought you meant item five. If we could just skip down to items for discussion.
So I'm gonna assume there's no request to be heard. We're gonna skip five for a second, we're gonna skip six for a second, and we're going to go do seven and hear from Dave Womber.
So, uh, I did want to update the planning commission. Our planning coordinator, Peter Waldock, who's worked with the city now for 20 years, decided to, um, retire early. He had hoped to, um, uh, originally planned on till May, so it was a little unexpected for us and, um, so Peter is no longer with us, but we wish him the very best with grandkids and family and spending time along. With all of that, um, but we did want to, uh, let you know that we will be looking for a replacement here, but it is gonna take at least a couple months before we can, probably wanted to update you on that and thank Peter for his service. Um, we are looking at a celebration sometime coming up, um, at the city and we can let you know about that.
Obviously invite the whole planning commission, but yeah, I have a long, I have a long history with Peter.
Yep, so we, we are so appreciative of all that Peter has done and wish him the very best, um, and we'll keep you updated on a celebration coming up.
Anything else on board in commission updates?
No, that's true.
Okay, so now we'll backtrack. Thanks for coming in, Dave, good to see you again. Uh, general planning and zoning updates. Harry?
Yes, Mr. Chair, so, uh, just a few things, I guess coming off of that, so in terms of, uh, department capacity, we're further reduced, um, so please be patient with me as I try to respond to the other requests, uh, instead of being able to. This, small, small joking aside, uh, we are trying our very best and we will, we will be looking for somewhere. Very big shoes to fill, but. We are positive and we'll be able to kind of get back on track when it comes to capacity and just being able to kind of work on some of these items like the, uh, work plan for the planning commission, uh, which, just a small side note there, I do think that thinking about updating the ordinance so that we don't have to have a conditional use permit for a single family home. Bring that into compliance with the DNR, uh, that's something that I think that we could probably add to that agenda as well as any of the items we talked about at our last meeting. So beyond that, there are a few projects that are coming up. Um, there's the RSA, uh, CNA spending project that is actually coming back. You all might remember it in terms of there was a variance, there's a comprehensive plan amendment as well as a zoning map amendment, um, so there were quite a few things that wrapped up into it. Uh, this is actually coming back, they were able to strike a deal with that property owner that was holding out, and so they are moving forward without a variance, which we are very excited and happy to facilitate and work with them on trying to get to the point where they're able to expand. So, uh, that'll be coming at the next planning commission meeting. Um, we are still waiting on some additional information from the county, but there is a county access road that is also, uh, being public notice for the next planning commission meeting here in July. We are waiting on, uh, additional info before we bring it in front of you all. Uh, we want to make sure that you guys have the information that you need to make a decision as well as staff, we want to be sure that when we give a recommendation that it's based off of really solid documentation and general calculations from the applicant. Uh, just to provide some background, so the public safety center, which is all the way, all the way there on the north side of town, um, the sheriff for the county wants to put in an access road in order to gain access to the river as it meanders past the public safety center. That is actually a conditional use permit within the wild and scenic river overlay zone, which encompasses that part of the river as it's, you know. So that's the impetus for the conditional use permit that we will see coming up. There are likely some variances that we will have to consider in the same way that we consider them as part of the Kleberger, uh, item that was just before you all, uh, but we won't know until we have more information and I don't want to bring out a recommendation to you all, I want to make sure you have all of this information. So we're working with them just to make sure that we have.
He's got a follow-up.
The, I think the right name, the Skyline Drive, the city street that's supposed to come down into that road that goes past the sheriff's office?
Eastview Drive, maybe?
Yes, thank you. Would it be possible for his road to follow that footprint, or does that make sense, or is that not what he's doing? So you're not, you'd have minimal impact to the, uh, in nature, the whole thing, I mean, minimal impact, the way I, way I look at it.
Yeah, it's, it's a really good question, particularly because where that road goes to now is sort of within maybe 50 or 100 feet of that wild and scenic river overlay as well as floodplain, and there's shoreline to contend with. So it's kind of a combination of things that are really making this a more difficult proposition than I think anyone would really like it to be. There are certain things that we need to be sure that there's a no rise certificate that's submitted as part of it. That's not a city requirement, that's actually a federal requirement and a state requirement. That's to certify that there is no change in flood level as a result of any of the improvements that are made to the floodplain. And a floodplain, you know, like I said before, is within 50 feet of where the public safety center grounds sort of start. So we're, we need a lot more information before we feel comfortable bringing that through with the regulations, which is what we're trying to get. That's, that's part of what we're thinking is, okay, is this just an extension of Eastview Drive? Or is this maybe something? Right now it is sort of an extension. It would just be a private, private road just for emergency access.
Is that everything? Oh, Bart, that's right.
Yes. So, uh, once we have a little bit more information, we can share that with the DNR. Be able to get their input on that. Yeah, yeah, it, Mr. Chair, you know, probably the events of, uh, you know, sort of the heavy rain that we've experienced recently, I mean, that is probably enough of a reason to really consider this as, this, this is really an important infrastructure piece, not just for the county, but also for the city. We do recognize and we understand that, the problem is that we have, we have rules, we have, we have codes. This is one where this is looking at it from the outside the right thing to do, but we just have to make sure that we're taking all the bad. That make sense?
Anything else on board and commission update? I just want to add real fast, uh, yeah, we're going through a lot of transitions right now. This, we can navigate through this, I, I've seen worse before. There's just a, you know, losing Peter, Harry's new, we got some new folks here. If you're wondering why, and those that have seen me chair meetings, I'm running a much tighter meeting than I'm. But until we get our feet under us and kind of be together, that's why I'm being really strict right now. Kind of, and Harry and I have talked about it, we're just working our way through it. And even stuff like, you saw how much more detail I went into on the public. Walked him through step by step. I am a much more pleasant, cheerful chair. Last few meetings, we'll get there again, uh, but that's why, and Heather, I know you enjoyed this so much, you're going to come to every planning commission. Excellent, so things are looking up for us now.
No, I will not.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Chair, just, just very quickly, I realize that the way that I approach certain things may not, may not be everyone's cup of tea, but I want to make sure that I'm hearing people. If there's a different way that you would prefer things presented, or if there's a different way to, you know, go to the same result, but maybe just go about it just slightly different. I'm very open to criticism. I realize that I am part of the, you know, the newer set of people that are coming into this. I just want to make sure that you guys are getting the information that you need in the way that you think makes sense. If there's any improvements that I can make, I want to do them, but it's not an improvement to you.
I think you've been very diplomatic, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, okay. End on a high note, are we done?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. I got a motion to adjourn, Eric's got the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.